Good morning. Welcome to the Tulare County Planning Commission. Wednesday, May 9, 2018, meeting. I have roll call, please.
Long?
Here.
Bailey?
Here.
Elliot?
Here.
Diaz?
Here.
Whitlatch?
Here.
Commissioner Pietiglierano is absent, as she did inform us. Aguilar?
Here. Stand for the Fledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to your republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the physical, the liberty, and justice for all.
At this time, members of the public may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda. Under state law, matters presented under this item cannot be discussed or acted upon by the Planning Commission at this time. For items appearing on the agenda, the public will be invited to make comments at the time the item comes up for Planning Commission consideration. So that all interested parties have an opportunity to speak, any person addressing the Planning Commission may be limited at the discretion of the Chair. In order to be considered by the Planning Commission, testimony on public hearing items must be given at the time scheduled for the public hearing. At all times, please use a microphone and state your name and address for the record. This time, we will entertain a motion for the approval of the minutes of the April 25, 2018.
I'll make a motion we approve the April 25, 2018.
Second.
Long?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Elliot?
Yes.
Diaz?
Yes.
Whitlatch?
Yes.
Aguilar?
Yes. We'll continue with item 4A, which is a special use permit, PSP 18-009, RIM Resources LLC.
Mr. Chair, I'm going to have to recuse myself. Property to the current owners, so I'm not going to leave the dais. But I am going to be sitting in the audience because I might have testimony, be able to provide testimony that might be beneficial.
Ready?
Yes, thank you, Dana Metlin, Resource Management Agency. And this project is a categorical exemption and special use permit number PSP 18-009. And the project is a request to allow a private school with an agriculture-based learning program for adults 18 years and older on a 10-acre parcel in the AE20 zone, which is south of Visalia. This is the location and property ownership map. The project was noticed according to the law. Staff has received comments from the property administrators of the Manor Mobile Home Park, which is located west of the subject property. And their concerns will be addressed later in this presentation. The project was found to be categorically exempt from CEQA pursuant to Title 14, Section 15303, Class 3, pertaining to new construction or conversion of small structures. The project is compatible with this exemption because development of the site would include the addition of bathrooms, modular classrooms, and office, all of which would be, would not exceed the 10,000-square-foot and floor area on-site zoned for such use, provided all facilities are there. Entitlement is found in Section 162B of Ordinance Number 352, the zoning ordinance, which allows private schools in the AE20 zone so long as a special use permit has been secured. And I just put up the definition of a private school up there, which is an institution conducting regular academic construction at kindergarten, elementary, secondary, or college levels, which is operated by a non-governmental organization. The project is located within the urban area boundary of the city of Visalia, and the land use designation is agriculture. The city of Visalia was sent a consultation notice regarding the project, and their response was no comment. The project was found to be consistent with these Tulare County general plan policies. This is the vicinity map. The project is located at 26814 South Mooney Boulevard, on the south side of Avenue 268, which is actually a private road, east of Mooney Grove Mobile Home Park and south of Mooney Grove Park. This is the aerial photograph. You can see the Mobile Home Park to the east. If I can... Here is the Mobile Home Park. Here's the property in between the Mobile Home Park and the subject site, and this is known as the Trask property. And this is where the project will occur. And in documentation, which we'll see in a few minutes, this is known as the Heater property. This is the zoning map. The site is zoned AE20 and contains two residences, a shop building, a shed, well and septic systems, and propane tanks. The properties to the east, south, and west are all zoned AE20 and contain rural residences and agriculture. The property to the north is the city of Visalia, Mooney Grove Park, which is owned by the county. And again, the Manor Home, Mobile Home Park is right here. This is the site plan. LINKS is an acronym for Linking Individuals in Key Settings. They provide care and support within a natural setting for adults 18 and older who have been diagnosed with intellectual disabilities. The working environment teaches skills that will help the students achieve self-independence and vocational skills for those seeking employment. This site was chosen for its potential to provide multiple agricultural avenues, modular classrooms, vocational shops, and administrative offices. The main focus of this program is to provide vocational training and practical implementation in an agricultural setting. The days and hours of operation will be Monday through Friday. Staff hours will be 8:30 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., and the student hours will be 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. The facility will employ 15 persons on one shift, and the site will have 20 parking spaces and one loading space. The applicants are proposing one freestanding sign to be located in front of the property. And this facility will be licensed through the State of California Department of Developmental Services. This is the access along the private road. There has been an issue arisen, being questioned about this access by the administration of the Mobile Home Park, which is the Manor property. And it has been determined by the county surveyor that the access road to these properties is a 24-foot paved road that was granted by the county via Board of Supervisors Resolution Number 1996-88102, which vacated this portion of Road 268 to the then-Manor property owners Cummings and Connors. Fella? Documents we passed out. In the packet that you're receiving right now contains Board of Supervisors Resolution Number 1996-088102. And this is the primary document that the county surveyor perused yesterday. And he came up with three important findings. One is that the vacation of Avenue 268 provided vehicular access needs for all present users of the park. Two, the Manor owner was required to grant to Trask and Heater, which were the two properties to the east, a non-exclusive easement for residential road and utility purposes. That easement agreement has not been found. And thirdly, there was a grant deed that's also in your packet there that was recorded document 1999-52654, which is the grant deed for the Manor property. And in that grant deed, it provides a non-exclusive easement to the property for public use. The Manor property was also concerned about traffic and safety issues because of the numbers of children who walk from the Mobile Home Park to the bus stop on Mooney Boulevard each morning. And in effort to stagger the traffic generated from the proposal, we're going to add this condition number two regarding the hours of operation being... Well, the school will be open Monday through Friday, and we're going to stagger the staff and student hours so that there's not as much traffic going down that street while the children are going to school. So the staff will be 8:30 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., and the students, their hours will be 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. And that was condition number two up there. So condition number one also requires, will require that a maintenance agreement for this private road be executed between the property owners, the Manor property owners and the RIM property owners, and maybe Trask if they can get them involved. So this is staff's recommendation that your Planning Commission tentatively approve a categorical exemption consistent with CEQA and conditionally approve special use permit number PSP 18-009, then bring back findings in two weeks' time, which would be May 23, at your next meeting, which will be approved on the consent calendar. And that concludes staff's report. Questions?
Did it say how many students would they anticipate having?
Well, in the, I guess, when the public comment portion is opened up, we can ask them because they, I don't know if they have a definite number there. They did say, I think, 15 staff.
That was 18.
And staff, so I missed.
Or staff.
Yeah, staff would be 15.
Yeah, so I was one of those.
About 50.
Any other questions of Dana? Were you going to mention something, Erin?
No, go ahead.
At this point, we will go ahead and open the public hearing. So anybody wishing to speak on this item, please step forward, state your name and address. Right there, yes.
Oh, thank you. My name is Suzanne Taylor. I'm the Executive Director of Augusta Communities. We're a nonprofit affordable housing organization formed in 1999. We're located at 400 North Mountain Avenue, Suite 205 in Upland, California. We have about 900, we serve about 928 households, and we have several affiliate organizations that provide ownership entities and residential services, residence services, activities. Villa del Arroyo Moor Park LLC is the ownership entity for this property, but we refer ourselves as Augusta, to ourselves as Augusta. I wanted to provide staff... That's a copy of an email correspondence from a resident, Pamela Reed, that she asked me to provide for the record. Okay. This is kind of an interesting planning situation because part of our property is located in the city of Visalia, and the applicant is located in Tulare. And if you go back through the record, as I explained before, that the county originally owned that road and in 1998 negotiated with the owners of our property to grant them that, that land. And the historical record talks about why that happened. I think you probably already have that information. I wanted to kind of get a couple points in that we're concerned about or we just need to work through really. One is the, our interpretation of the use agreements for that property differ from what the county staff believes. And we wanted to focus in on kind of making sure we have all our maintenance agreements established for going forward in the future. We want to talk about in those documents the maintenance and improvements of the roadway, the street improvements, light, lighting, signage, and the typical development issues along that road. We want to talk about the liabilities and insurance and non-insurable matters as people cross over our property on the private road with easement access. We want to talk about the security issues related to the use of that road and the people who are not related to any of the uses developed along the street. One of our concerns is traffic enforcement. It's a private road, and I think it's possible to work with the city or county, whoever would be responsible for traffic safety on that road, to maybe enter into an agreement where they could enforce traffics, traffic if there was a problem. But right now, it's a private road. There is quite a bit of, there's a surprising, surprising amount of pedestrian traffic and bicycle traffic along A Street. And A Street, I think, is 18 feet, according to our records. Some of that asphalt is on our property and not on the right, on the vehicular right-of-way. So it's a narrow street for a lot of people to be sharing, cars, utilities, public safety, refuse, that kind of thing. But we have an enormous amount of pedestrian bicycle use on there. There's a bus stop at Mooney Boulevard and A Street where many of our 110 children who live in the park walk with, with and without their parents. A lot of our community members do not have cars, and they use their bicycles to get to the services on Mooney Boulevard. So there is a lot of bicycle traffic and a lot of walking. And I believe when I spoke with RIM Properties, they mentioned also that they expect there to be some, I don't know if they know how much, but some pedestrian activity from public transportation on Mooney Boulevard to their property, which of course would pass in front of our manufactured housing community. The reason there's a, there's a lot of foot traffic and bicycle traffic is about 95% of our residents are of lower income, and they don't have, they want to use public transportation or walk or ride their bike. I take exception to the number three of the findings. Our reading and our attorney's reading of the conveyance document... Yeah, thank you. And the grant deed, and some of those kind of are different. Number three, it says, provides a non-exclusive easement to the property for public use. We disagree with that. We believe it reads that it's for use for the maintenance yard of the park and for the two parcel owners and for people who come to our property and not for general public use. We believe that the 244 feet that is immediately west of Mooney Boulevard and on the eastern end of the street is absolutely for, entirely for public use. So in our minds, it's public use. I don't have the map there, but public use, then use for the property owners along that street. And then where our, our, our ownership of A Street ends at the east, easterly end of our property. So the Trask parcel and the Heater parcel, where it's just red right there, that's not our, we don't have anything to do with that. So we just have to do with the green striped area. And you can see the small property line, Dana. Do you think you can point that out? The east end of...
Oops, sorry.
Oops, sorry.
So on the east... I know, it's...
It's jumping, huh?
Okay, right there.
That line right there.
Right here. This line? You said to the east.
I meant to the west, I'm sorry.
Oh, you meant to the west.
And then, one more, right? Right there, that's 244 feet. And that, the record looks like that that was intended for, entirely for public use in case the county wanted to use that for an access entrance. So that's where we differ in that interpretation. We, what our intention is to carefully sort through those issues and work with the applicant on an easement that addresses those issues. So I have a note here that I wanted to read. If you could just bear with me one second. It also jumped away. Villa del Arroyo, which is the owner of the Mooney Grove Mobile Home Park, is willing to negotiate the terms and conditions of the easement and maintenance agreements that are contemplated in Section 4 of the conveyance documents, which is the agreement to convey real property for road reconstruction and maintenance dated January 15, 1996 and recorded in August 11, on August 11, 1998, as amended by the Amendment to Agreement to Convey Real Property and for Road Reconstruction and Maintenance dated June 15, 1999. And through the execution of an easement and maintenance agreement to clearly provide the RIM owners have non-exclusive easement over our property from Mooney Boulevard to their property solely for access and to expand the scope of the easement. Currently, that green easement in our reading says, and I believe it said also in, in the findings, that right now it's for residential road and utility purposes only. So that would needed to be expanded to, the scope of the easement would need to be expanded, which currently conveyance documents now limit to residential road and utility purposes. We need to clear it up that it'd be able to provide commercial use on that easement. Such easement agreements would also include maintenance provisions and insurance obligations. And as we read it, just in summary, the county's non-exclusive easements are listed in Section 3 of the conveyance agreement. And RIMs and Trask's easements are listed in Section 4 of that agreement. The county easements are limited to utility purposes and the county's proprietary use and public access only for the last 244 feet adjacent to the county park.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to address?
Good morning. My name is John Trask, and I am the property owner adjoining the proposed project.
Address, please.
The address, the same as all of the, everybody living on that road is all on Mooney Boulevard. So we have more than 300 people sharing a common address. But it's 26814 South Mooney Boulevard, the same as the project, the same as the Mobile Home Park. I've, I'll back up. I'm 87 years old, and I have lived on this property for more than 50 years. The property has been in my family for more than 60 years. And the property was bought, it's a four-acre parcel, was bought off of the back of a 20-acre Walnut Grove. And we bought it because we wanted to be in the country. Four years after we bought it, the Walnut Grove was sold to the Mobile Home Development. And so we had more than 300 tenants on one side. And now, this project on the other side, I'm not opposed to it. I am, I do have some concerns about the roadway, mainly, I think. I, for probably some 50 years, from time to time, I have approached both the county and the city to see if they would accept the road as a, as a, as a, as a public roadway. The roadway now is posted on Mooney Boulevard as Road 16, as Road 268. And that is not, that's not accurate because that, it has no designation, really. They're, right? Yeah. And when the, when they, when they made the transition and, and put the property, put the roadway, we had an option, and I believe the Mobile Home Park did purchase the, the right-of-way? Did the, did the Mobile Home Park purchase the right-of-way for the roadway?
Talk, talk to us.
Yeah. Do you know? Do you know if it was purchased? No. That's, that's why I was asking her. I thought she would have the information. At any rate, at any rate, at that time, I declined to purchase it because it was going to be left open as access, as public access. And I felt that I should not be required to, to harness the liability of, of anything happening on that part of the roadway or maintain, maintain it for public access. It gets a lot of use, a lot of heavy use because it is access to the back service entrance to Mooney Grove Park. And so with the, the equipment going in and out, the trash trucks and all of that, it takes, it takes its toll. And as was, as was mentioned, the width of the roadway is just barely wide enough for two cars to pass without one of them pulling off of the paved area. And there is sufficient width there for it to, to be developed in, into a non-standard road if that was, if that was the case. But the, the project, as I understand it, is for the, is to help train mentally challenged, perhaps. And the, there were a lot of answers that were given as far as the times of operation that I had... that I had questions about. So I think that my main concern would be what was, what the decisions about the roadway and all of that. I don't know if, being the owner of the adjacent property and our park property is a butt for that, probably, I think that's 640 feet deep along their 10 acres and my 4. And I, I don't know, do you have any questions for me since I'm here? No?
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
My name is Misty Varner.
Israel Fernandez.
And we're with RIM Resources. I'd like to kind of.
Your address, please.
Our address is 3806 La Borden, Bakersfield, California.
And this is in regards to 26814 South Mooney Boulevard.
I'd like to address some of the concerns that you have here. My partners and I have been in this field for approximately 20 years, working with individuals with developmental disabilities. And we take safety as one of our number one priorities. Our staff are fingerprinted and they have a background check that they have to be able to clear to work with individuals. So the people that we're bringing into this project are also people that are very concerned about safety. We take the road as a huge safety concern. And we've somewhat addressed those types of things. And definitely with the maintenance agreement, we are on board with that. But we also have a business operation too that goes around 8 to 4:30 approximately with clients not getting there until approximately 9 o'clock. And during that time, you will see a couple of buses or a couple of vans, small vans coming through. It wouldn't be a large amount of vehicles coming through. If so, it would be approximately two or three vans. Our suggestions and our thoughts on that during this time of development was we have staff members that would be out doing traffic at that time. So between 8, 9:30 and then again at 2:30 to 4:00 when we're closing.
We would have two or four walking guards. In light of the fact that there are going to be kids walking to school, we make sure that there would be walking guards instructing the kids or instructing the vans of where to go. So at all times when there are kids present during the hours that she mentioned, between 8:30 and say 9:30, walking guards would be there to ensure the safety of both the kids as well as our clients. And also at closing, two to four walking guards would be present as well assisting the kids if they're in prison as well as the vans instructing them of where to go. And also in terms of lighting, we have no problems with putting signs up as well as lightings. Now obviously, we would have to talk to the Mobile Home Park. Since they do own a large section of that road, obviously, we still need to get all the details in terms of how the easements and why not. But we have no problem in setting up a such fund where we could put monies in there in order to appease them in terms of the lighting, signage, maintenance of the road. But also, we would want to get a fair amount from them as well as from us. And if there's any more questions that they have in terms of safety, we'd be more than happy to address them. So just like you have the schools now that are in session, you always have a cross guard. We would do something very similar to that.
Our individuals might be using public transportation as well, so we're concerned with that.
And in terms of public use, our clients or they have severe mental disabilities. So obviously, there wouldn't be any, they wouldn't be walking as much. Some that do have, that are higher functioning, that may take the bus, which would be very, very few. Maybe 10 at most. They in turn, of course, would be assisted from the bus stop all the way to the facility. So they would never be by themselves, there would always be one staff member with them.
And you mentioned you expect up to 50?
That's a guess, but right now, we have a project in Bakersfield and it's been operating for nine years. And we started with four, went to six. It's only been, it's been nine years and we have 46. So this isn't something that next year, we're having 50 or tomorrow, we're going to have 50. This is something that is gradually looked at and developed.
How do you receive the funding for the students that attend the school? I mean, where does that come from?
Okay. We're a vendor of the Central Valley Regional Center. And so there's 21 regional centers in the state of California who provide services for those with intellectual and developmental disabilities. And it's an entitlement. So people with disabilities have an entitlement to school, to an education, for living and training. And so therefore, the regional centers find vendors to provide services. So that's how we will be provided funding.
Where do your students come from?
Our students will come from the Tulare-Vicelia area. So we are servicing people in this community that need training and support.
It's a commuter school, people come and go. You don't have any onsite facilities to house people?
No. We don't have anybody there on the weekends and at night. This is the school and this program will be during the days of the operations that we stated earlier.
Who are they selected to come to this school?
By need. This is an entitlement, so everything is done through the regional center based on their needs. If a regular school setting in the public setting was unable to provide them training, then they look outside. So criteria on what's out there and what their likes are and their abilities. Because of that entitlement, each and every one of them have the right to say where they want to learn from and what type of work they want to learn and hopefully get into in the future.
So they graduate and they're certified or how do they get out of the program?
Some people will be assessed and move on and hopefully find a job in their community to be able to do something similar. And it could be as simple as learning how to pack. So it doesn't mean they're going to necessarily be in an agricultural setting again on a farm. But they will be addressed that way. Some people might stay longer, just depends on their needs.
Do you have placement services for these students?
We're not a placement service, we're just an educational service.
Do they have criminal backgrounds?
That, I'm not sure if they will have that. Well, that'll be assessed as it comes in. But most likely with the needs that they have, their developmental disability, there probably won't be any criminal activity in that.
So there's no, you're not providing any extraordinary security services onsite for any particular reason?
No. That's not needed. And we also, what I was saying, our program that we have in Bakersfield, our program is a one-to-one program there. This isn't even a one-to-one program because of the need of the people that we're serving, okay? It's not as stringent and as strict as the one we have in Bakersfield.
And the reason it's a one-on-one is because once more, their intellectual disabilities are such that they need somebody to assist them either in walking or just from point A to point B. So you're not talking about those people that's just coming down the street, that's going to apply and why not. They have to be assessed a lot of times by a psychologist. And because of their mental disabilities and because of their functioning skills, sometimes they can't write, they can't pick up a pen or they can't pick up a tool. So somebody has to assist them with that.
When I say developmental and intellectual disabilities, that falls under cerebral palsy, autism, epilepsy. There's a certain criteria that falls under this. It's just people that are in a wheelchair or just have sight issues or hearing issues. These are people that need some extraordinary support.
A lot of times, they need assisting in the shower, going to the restroom and why not.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning Commissioners, Tricia Stever Blattler with the Tulare County Farm Bureau at 737 North Bidmaddix Way here in Vicelia. I did not receive the notice of consultation, but I'm not an adjacent property owner. I wouldn't expect to have probably received this one. But it was brought to my attention through our land use committee. We had a couple of members that asked me to investigate it a little farther. I had many of the same questions that you've asked here this morning. I did drive out to the property yesterday. I was equally confused by the recurrence of the same address number along so many different parcels and mailboxes. So I'm not terribly sure I looked at the right property when I went out there yesterday. I did find a very friendly, but not so friendly pit bull on a big long chain chained up in front of what I thought was part of that parcel where a mobile home was behind a big fence. I could be wrong, maybe that's not part of the property. But I would characterize the road as one of your major challenges. I encountered chickens, peacocks, children, stray cats, county workers driving rather fast. And the road was not sufficient for all of those unique uses going on at the same time, particularly a lot of kids crossing out of the park into the mobile homes and dodging the chickens and the peacocks and all of that. From an agriculture perspective, which is what Farm Bureau would care about in this particular subject matter, we're a huge supporter of agriculture education and vocational training. And we certainly want this county to provide a backdrop for those training experiences. I would ask that in the conditions of the permit, the owners of the property and those that will be responsible for the implementation of this experience really be mindful that as they plant trees or other crops or have livestock or any component of production agriculture at the site, we want to make sure that they're going to be a good neighbor, not only to the county park, but to the residents that are nearby and to other neighboring agricultural properties. We don't want to have any introduction of invasive species or diseases. We want to make sure that they employ, you know, a farm manager that has expertise in managing for disease and pest, that will make sure that proper cultural practices are applied to any tree and nut crops, fruit crops, vegetable beds. We want to make sure that they are going to be a good neighbor and improve the character of that neighborhood, improve the character of that roadway, provide high-quality instruction that will exemplify the best of the agricultural industry that is here, serve as an on-ramp for education and employment of these individuals, that they will serve as customers. And just in my very brief 24 hours of kind of investigating the owner of the property, I could find very little information about their knowledge or expertise in delivering agriculture education. It sounds like they have a facility in Bakersfield that serves a similar customer population. But I just wanted to reach out and make sure that if they are bringing an agricultural educational facility into Tulare County, that they are mindful of running it in a manner that it exemplifies good agricultural stewardship, good agricultural practices and does not be, you know, is not a nuisance to the neighborhood. So those would really be Farm Bureau's official comments. We mostly want to make sure that we can have good neighbors amongst the park and the residents that already live there and any farming properties that may also be nearby, the orchard they intend to plant or any other practices that they will have around agriculture. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, my name's Erica Taylor. I'm with Augusta Communities at 400 North Mountain Avenue, Suite 205 in Upland, California. I just wanted to add that Mooney Grove Mobile Home Park is on A Street, which we refer to as Avenue 268, actually has 24, I'm sorry, it's 23 mobile homes whose driveway faces the park and rather what's typical in mobile home parks where they face interior. So those homes have direct driveways onto A Street. I also like to mention that we're actually undergoing a renovation project at the community where we're adding a private entry into the community with key card access, which we don't think will cause a backup into the road because we're putting it so far into our entrance. But I just wanted to note that as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak on this project?
Hi, my name is Anton Payton. I'm also with RIM Resources at 3806 La Borden Place, Bakersfield, California, in regards to 26814 South Mooney Boulevard. To address some of the issues for our agriculture and being a good neighbor, I mean, every property that we, that our organization comes across, all we do is better it. We input, I mean, we just improve basically. As far as the agriculture, I've already gone through a personal source as far as concerns about what to plant, not to plant a crazy amount of things just to avoid any type of infestation of pests and all of that. And we've also, we've been looking into livestock, but we are concerned about having a farming manager, you know, just doing all the right steps to make sure the soil is ready to plant that orchard, having little garden areas. We're taking all those steps. We don't want, we're going to have the soil tested and stuff before we even just go out and plant because who knows what could happen. I don't know how long that land's been sitting without any type of ag, you know, production on there. So we've already looked into that, so it's going to be steps. It's not going to be right away. We're just going to plant a huge 2.5 acre plot of walnut orchard. But we, but we're taking all the proper precautions for that. That's pretty much all I have to say.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Well, through the chair, Aaron Bach, Chief Planner, Tulare County. Over the last 24 hours, we've had a lot of discussions about this project. All the conditions that we've presented today, including the motions, are the result of those discussions with the applicant and with the Mobile Home Park property managers. We do have in the record right now, our county surveyors, not just staffs, the county surveyors' expert testimony as far as what are the rights to that easement. We could spend a lot of time today, which I did not want to do, going over that easement. But that's why we're leaving room in these conditions and in the motion for these things to get worked out over the next two weeks. This, if you go back to the condition quickly, Dana? The maintenance agreement, we agree that there was no easements or that easements that were to be granted to Trask and Heater may never have occurred. And that is something that may occur at this time. But mostly and most important, as we've discovered over the years, is the maintenance agreement itself is very important. So if we can put those things into place here in short order, we would not record the resolution for this item until that occurs. But again, we'd be looking to move on. I don't, I didn't hear anybody in firm opposition to this project. But I think that's just the details that need to get worked out. And that RIM also needs to move forward fairly quickly. That's why we're pushing to get this before you today.
Yeah, from what I heard, the biggest issues were safety and maintenance of this road. And I think the condition of approval does address that, so.
And there is a requirement for the county to maintain up to 50%, but there's another party here that could assist as well. They're definitely willing to assist in any way they can, within reason.
Aaron, is this is an official Avenue 268?
No, this is a PVAE. This was a roadway that was vacated and given to these property owners.
Oh, so it's not a county maintained road?
It's not a county maintained. We maintain it as any other private owner to an easement would maintain it.
It has a reciprocal easement agreement for all?
For just, we have a non-exclusive easement agreement between us and the Mobile Home Park. But past that, now, I mean, we, again, I don't want to get lawyers involved in the reading and interpretation as. in the reading and interpretation as to what the rights are under this agreement, but our surveyor's opinion is that that is an easement, a non-exclusive easement. But, the, as to the Trask and Heater properties, this document could, in its reading, did give, did give them a non-exclusive easement, but it was never effectuated with the actual easement recorded. So, that was supposed to occur, may or may never have occurred, but that was not, that act itself didn't necessarily affect the rights at that time. So, again, we have the survey, surveyor, county surveyor in the record stating exactly what our county's position is on those rights of access. But, as far as an actual reciprocal easement document, we do not believe one exists.
One doesn't exist.
No, but this, the vacation agreement itself gave them that right. And also, if you read the deeds that went along with the mobile home park, there's definitely non-exclusive easement, given the county's public access, so.
That's in these documents, they just hand it out to us, right?
Correct, but again, I didn't want to, uh...
Page two, number four?
Correct. I did not necessarily want to involve that issue in this discussion in regards to this special use permit. Again, these are private PVAE, not public roadway, so that would be an issue between the owners here. And they are all willing to negotiate and work this out, so it's, I don't want to make that a cornerstone to any decision made here today. But, we have made room in the conditions of approval and in the motion itself to consider those. And bring it back to the planning commission in two weeks.
Thank you. At this time, we will close the public hearing.
There's no further discussion. I'd like to make a motion. Okay? I'll make a motion that we approve a categorical exemption consistent with SEQA Quality Act.
Commissioner, do you mind just reading right off that board? Just because we have an amended motion here, it might be easier unless...
Read it up there?
Yes, sir. Yeah, just read it exactly as...
Okay. I get it now. This seems to be a road issue, and I would agree with staff, and I think those next two weeks will take care of anybody's problems, so we'll have a chance to see it again. So, once again, I make a motion, we approve, tentatively approve a categorical exemption consistent with California Environmental Guidelines and State SEQA. Somebody do this, I'm having trouble seeing today.
I'll read it.
Okay.
Tentatively approve a categorical exemption consistent with the California Environmental Quality Act SEQA and the State SEQA Guidelines pursuant to Title 14 California Code Regulation Section 15303, Class 3 pertaining to new construction or conversion of small structures, and conditionally approve special use permit number PSP 18-009, and bring back findings in two weeks, May 23rd, date certain, which will be approved on the consent calendar.
Thank you, Wayne, for helping me out there.
I'll second.
Oh, yeah, sure. Okay.
We have a second.
Gong?
Yes.
Millies? Millies?
Yes.
Elliot?
Yes.
Yes, I'm sorry. Willatch?
Yes.
Aguilar?
Yes. So, and that will not be a public hearing, is that correct?
That would not be a public hearing, beyond consent, but the, everybody will be made aware of all our findings.
I thank all of you who participated in this hearing for your information. At this time, we will continue with Item B, which is a special use permit PSP 17-092, PSR 17-009. Have Dana again.
Thank you, Commissioner Aguilar. This project is a third residence on a 29,000 square foot parcel in the A1 Zone, which is located in Terabella. And, this is really a special use permit number PSP 17-092 that was taken in as a final site plan. This is the location and property ownership map. This project was noticed according to the law. Staff has not received any comments regarding this project. The project is categorically exempt from SEQA pursuant to Title 14, Section 15303, Class 3 pertaining to new construction. The project is, this exemption is appropriate and compatible with the project because the construction of one single family residence is within an urbanized area. Entitlement is found in Section 10.C.3, which is the A1 Zone in the zoning ordinance, number 352, and it does allow third residences in this zone as long as a special use permit is first secured. This is the vicinity map for this project. And it is located on the north side of Avenue 95, which is Terabella Boulevard, approximately 325 feet east of Road 242 in the community of Terabella. The project is located within the urban development boundary of Terabella, and the land use designation is low, medium density residential. This designation establishes areas suitable for single-family neighborhoods at relatively low densities on lots ranging from generally 5,000 to 12,500 square feet in urbanized areas. This designation is used only within the UDBs, and this land use allows one to eight dwelling units per acre. Since this parcel is 29,000 square feet, it's just over one-half acre, which would be consistent with up to four dwelling units on this property. This is the aerial photo. There are two existing, sorry, I don't know, there are two existing residences on this property. There's one here, and there's one here, and there is a shed in between those two property houses, and that shed has been illegally converted to a residence. There is an active code violation on this property for the conversion of a storage building into a single-family dwelling. Property is zoned, as I said, A1, which is an agriculture zone. The surrounding properties are zoned A1 and RA 43, and they contain rural residences and agriculture.
So, the proposed residence is an existing residence?
It is existing, an illegal conversion to a residence. There's a site plan, so north is looking downward. This would be Terabella Avenue up here. This is the existing home, existing, and this is the shed that has been converted.
A question, that she had converted to code?
We, they have not yet acquired a building permit, and they cannot acquire a building permit until they get this special use permit approved. And, once they get the building permit, then the building inspectors will go out there and then we'll make that determination. The applicant is requesting permission to establish a third residence for a family member on a 784 square foot portion of this 29,000 square foot parcel. Applicant has submitted a will-serv letter from the Terabella Irrigation District for domestic water supply. A septic system will be utilized for the liquid waste disposal. A condition of approval from environmental health will require that the septic system be certified for continued use if it will also be serving the third residence, and the septic system will be subject to the local agency management program, the LAMP program. And approval of this project will allow the applicant to obtain a building permit for the third dwelling and subsequently, hopefully, close the violation. So, this is staff's recommendation that the commission approve the categorical exemption and conditionally approve special use permit number PSP 17-092 and final site plan PSR 17-009.
Question, Mr. Chair. Can we, notice, this is gonna be for a family member, can we limit this to family use on this and so that when, so it doesn't turn into a rental property?
Through the chair, Aaron Bach, Chief Planner, yes, we could limit it family use, and we have grounds to do that within our zoning code.
Questions of Dana? Okay, this is a public hearing, and we will open the public hearing at this time. If there's someone who wishes to speak, project, please come forward, state your name and address.
I'm here for my brother, he's outside, but he asked me to come in here because he doesn't understand English, so I'm here for...
Your address, please?
Excuse me?
Your address?
It's 24, 24280 Avenue 95.
Terabella?
Terabella. So, I'm just in here to tell him, you know, translate for him what's the decision that will be made here today, so.
He can come inside and stand with you.
Yeah?
Yeah, and you can directly translate for him in front of the commission if you'd like to.
Okay. Yeah, let me just, okay, thank you.
Can I ask a question? In the recommendation, it says "and" conditionally approved special use permit. Will that include the condition of, as Commissioner Diaz suggested, and it does say in here, it requires a permit, building permit, and septic certification, is that in the conditionally approved?
Yeah, through the chair, just as an overall process, not specific to this project, but what, when there's some illegally constructed structure out in the unincorporated areas, we require, if that's, would be allowed with a use permit, we're always pragmatic saying, okay, go ahead and apply for the use permit, rather than just tear it down and start from scratch. So, it's a pragmatic approach. If your commission does not approve this, then they would have to remove that and do that. But if you're to approve such a thing, then they will go through issue permits, and everything will have to be up to code. So, that's just the common practice in the county. So, yeah, so if, the approval of the use is one thing, but that doesn't approve the condition of the facility, it still needs to get building permits and meet code standards.
Jesus, you want to come back?
Bring that cute little girl, too, it's okay.
It's my daughter. ¿Quieres comentar? ¿Para qué quieres la casa? No más para...
Go ahead and have him state his name and address, please.
Okay.
Yeah, and to the microphone, too, so we can hear.
Okay, my name's Jaime Ramos, and my address is 24280 Avenue 95 in Terabella. Okay. ¿Quieres este edificio para poder tener ya familiares? He said, his comment is, he was building that shed into a guest house, because we're a really big family, we're just, in our family, we're 13 brothers and sisters, so every time when you visit each other, you know, there's a place where one of us can stay. So, the shed he converted into a home, it's just for a family use.
Yes, so if we, if we had a condition that it would only be used for family use and not turn into a rental property, then you guys are okay with that?
Él dice que probará el permiso, nada más para usarlo entre la familia. No lo puedes rentar a otra persona. Okay. He says it's fine.
Other questions? Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on this project? We will close the public hearing at this time and... See if there's a motion to approve or the commission.
I'll make a motion that we approve a categorical exemption consistent with the California Environmental Quality Act SEQA and the State SEQA Guidelines pursuant to Title 14 California Code Regulation Section 15303, Class 3 pertaining to new construction or conversion of small structures, and conditionally approve special use permit number PSP 17-092, and final site plan 17-009.
With the added condition of family member use?
And the added condition that the structure shall only be occupied by a family member.
Second?
Roca?
Yes.
Millies?
Yes.
Elliot?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Willatch?
Yes.
Aguilar?
Yes.
You need a break, Bill? Are we okay?
No, I'm okay.
All right, good.
The ladder's holding out. That's your permission.
All right, we're gonna move on to Item C, which is a special use permit PSP 18-002, the Magnolia Group. Have you again?
Yes, Commissioner Aguilar. This is to allow an 18-bed assisted living facility on a two-acre parcel in the RA 100 Zone, and that's a rural residential 100,000 square foot minimum, and this is located east of the city of Tulare. The location and property ownership map. This project was noticed according to the law. Staff did receive one inquiry from an adjacent property owner. His concern was with regard to the septic system and whether the current capacity would be sufficient for the proposed use. Staff informed the caller that a condition of approval would require the submission of an engineered septic design report to environmental health. He seemed to be satisfied with that, but he also had some other issues, and I believe he may be here to testify. The project is categorically exempt from SEQA pursuant to Section 15301, Class 1 pertaining to existing facilities, and the use of this section is applicable and appropriate because one interior, because only interior alterations are proposed for the project. Entitlement is found in Section 162B of Ordinance Number 352, which states that hospitals, sanitariums, and nursing homes are in allowed use in the RA Zone upon approval of a special use permit. Project is located within the urban area boundary of the city of Tulare, and the land use designation is agriculture. The city of Tulare received a consultation notice regarding this project, and they responded with a no comment, and the project is consistent with these applicable general plan policies. This is the vicinity map. The project is located at 1333 Lewis Lane, on the northwest corner of Lewis Lane and Prosperity Avenue, east of the city of Tulare. This is the aerial photograph. This two-acre parcel is fully developed. The previous property owner had an approved special use permit for a contractor's storage yard, and there's a lot of hardscape on this site. There's access from both Prosperity Avenue and Lewis Lane with sufficient parking for staff, visitors, and emergency vehicles. staff, visitors, and emergency vehicles. The zoning map, as mentioned, the site is zoned RA one hundred and contains a single-family residence with garage, pool, barn, and shop, and the surrounding properties are zoned RA one hundred and eighty twenty and contain rural residences and agriculture. This is the site plan. The proposal is to allow an eighteen-bed assisted living facility on this two-acre parcel. The number of employees at this facility will be twelve on various shifts to assure the two, twenty-four hour, seven day a week, three hundred sixty-five day a year coverage for the coverage and care of the residents. As mentioned, let's see, the facility will require licensing through the state community care licensing division and will meet all Title twenty-two regulations with regard to community care licensing. Water is provided by an existing domestic well and, as mentioned, there's an existing septic system which will have to be certified by environmental health. And that is the conclusion of staff's report and this is the recommendation for the planning commission, that you approve a categorical exemption consistent with SEQA and conditionally approve special use permit number PSP eighteen dash zero two two. Questions?
How big is the structure?
How big is the structure?
How big is the structure? Through the chair, we'd ask the applicant when they come up, they are in the building permit process, so that when we get, when we open comment. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions of Dana? Okay, we will open the public hearing. I will ask to see how many plan to speak in for or against this, to see if we need to limit the time from, by raise a hand. Okay, we should be okay. Then we will start with those in favor of the project and then we will go on to those against the project, please come forward and state your name and address.
Good morning, my name's Arnold Gonzalez. Address would be thirteen thirty-three Lewis Lane and this is Esperanza Gonzalez, same address. Our, our project is a assisted living facility for eighteen residents. We feel that we can provide an environment where it's a home-like environment in a country setting. Our, we have another community, existing community here in Visalia and our gardens are manicured. There's zero waste or debris on our sites. There, there, we, I take a lot of pride in, in what our community looks like and we're known for, for our great gardens and cleanliness in, both in and out, and trying to provide a great quality of care all the way to end of life. We feel that in that, that this property would be an asset to the community, we would not, never have any residents wandering around. The location of the property, given that it's a corner and it has access of both Prosperity and Lewis Lane, will provide sufficient traffic flow that it would not bother any of the residents. Emergency vehicles would be off of Prosperity, not through Lewis Lane. Staff and family residents, everybody would be encouraged to come off of Prosperity, so there would be almost zero impact through, it wouldn't bother any of the residents.
Good morning, Commissioners. Historically, we have, I've been doing this for about eighteen and a half, nineteen years. I was a hospice nurse before that, I was a visiting nurse home to home. It started out in the Hemphor community, it was an existing sixteen-bed facility. Since then, we started out ninety-nine, two thousand, came to Visalia in two thousand four, and so our history has been second to none with as far as the quality and how we take care of our residents in our facility. And we intend to be an asset to the community, whatever we go, in this case is going to be the one three three Lewis Lane. It is such, I think, that we add to the community and immersing our future, to me, there will always be mamas and papas because we do it twenty-four seven. So we're always taking care of them and I have taken great care to be that nurse for them, but I also become part of the family and extension to the family, so we take care of the community and how we choose the community in which we move into.
As far as the septic system, I'm totally, I did get the, the letter from environmental health and I did contact several companies already to try to, engineering companies to come in and, and take care of all the paperwork and the recommendations and everything for the system and will do whatever is necessary for that, but keep in mind that seniors take shorter showers and a lot of our residents will be on incontinent supplies, so the septic system will actually be less impacted than with the families that were living there.
Are, are you moving your existing facility to this or this is an additional facility?
No, this is an additional.
Yeah, we, we have served the county of Teleri in the Central Valley and many families have constantly requested that we do something in Teleri because there isn't anything like what we do. And sometimes the Teleri families have a hard time for X number of reasons making the transition to Visalia because they're Teleri families, so they want to stay in Teleri and that is why we're building a home for them, that area.
Ask how big the building is?
How big's the building? It, it's not the size it's going to be, so how big is the building?
We're actually not changing the, the footprint of the house, we're only doing interior remodel. The house is a little bit over five thousand square feet.
That answers it.
Any other questions? Thank you. Anyone else in favor of the project that would like to speak? Then we'll continue with those in opposition. If you, please come forward, state your name and address.
My name's Brett Winiger, my address is three three two six East Prosperity.
What was the last name, sir?
My concerns are, one is the septic system and the gentleman just up here said there'd be less impact on the, with the new people, and I says, well, you said you're going to have twelve staff and those twelve staff are still going to use the restrooms and things like that. So that's one of my concerns and another concern is I have walnuts and so I spray them, gildish them, I do all these things agriculturally and I've been there for twenty, I don't know, twenty-seven, twenty-eight years. I never had an issue before, I have a burn permit and all these types of things and so I don't want someone coming back next month, next year, whatever, so, well, you can't do that anymore, you can't do this anymore because it affects the residents at this facility. And I've had this happen before in regards to someone moved in, they split a piece of parcel across the street from me and we went to the client and commission and they were going to spend all this money and everything else in regards to what they were going to upgrade their house and everything else, well, if you drive down that street now, there's weeds this tall and they've never spent a dime on that house. And so we built a nice home out there and we wanted to be in the country as well and we don't, I mean, yeah, there's, there's not going to be maybe traffic on my particular street because I live on a private residence or road, but there is going to be traffic if you have eighteen people, people are going to come visit them, you have twelve staff members that used to be there and the residents that lived in that house were maybe four people, something like that.
Where is your parcel relative to this?
You have that map and I can, you show the little one that has all the, the one that came, the one that came in the deal here, I'll just...
It's at the very beginning.
Okay, I'm the one on this side, the second parcel, the big parcel on that side of that map. No, the other side, straight across, right there. That's mine. That's my parcel, right there.
Walnuts that are in the area?
Yes, there's walnuts, my hope, my house lets in walnuts, as does the house in front of mine. Went on pros, or, right directly, on, right there, yes. What's that?
How many acres do you have?
I have about two and a half.
These all come with the right to farm?
Yes.
Through the chair, at Project Review Committee, we were also concerned about the septic situation, the, the increase to it and that as we're going through the LAMP program, project was coming forward, they are aware that they will have to comply with the LAMP program and they're also aware that they, if you read the actual letter from environmental health, this is, you'll have to do an engineered system, this project, though, to, to account for the, the septic and yes, there is a right to farm notice that goes with these.
Questions?
Hello, my name's Darryl Ward and I live at three three two six B East Prosperity. I'm the little lot right next to his and I have the same problem because I have animals there, I have, I spray pasture. And, you know, I moved to the county, I made twenty-five years in the military, I moved to a rural residential to have a nice, quiet environment. Whether they think there's a lot of traffic, but there'll be all kinds of traffic. Prosperity is so busy now that they're having wrecks all the time, people stopping to turn. And that's at Lewis Lane, it's Oakmore, and we're just adding more and more and not doing anything to the roads. And I think at a point in time, because I know the building construction's already going on for this, before they get a chance to get the use permit. And we're changing this rural residential into a business community and it's just frustrating. And I want to go there, I want it quiet, I want, you know, I, I paid for it, I own my property and I've served my time and I would like to enjoy the next twenty years without additional and keep changing everything for no reason. So that's all I've got to say, if you've got any questions, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good morning.
My name's Bill Westbrook, I am the home directly west of this property. I also have walnuts and...
Your address?
Oh, I'm sorry, thirty-three thirty East Prosperity. It may have already been expressed and I couldn't hear it, but I'd like to know what kind of inhabitants are going to be in this home, the eighteen-bed home that I, I'm not aware that that was ever going to be there until I got a letter from you recently. I'm curious as to how that can come into being in a residential area, all of a sudden you're going to put in a business. And my concern is, will there be grown adults in this home? What I'm speaking about is, will they be physically challenged, mentally challenged? What? I, I haven't heard that and so I just would like to know, because it makes a difference. Because I'm wondering, if this place was being placed next to your home, what would you say? How would you feel? Like the others, I thought I was buying a home in the country. I liked country because I was raised in the country. Been a farmer all my life, but now I'm retired and I'm, I'm just concerned. And so would you allow your concern to be geared toward having this place next to you? Ask those questions to yourself and I'd like to know how you feel about it. And I would like for the people who are for this to tell us what ages will be the people that they want in this home. I guess the number one question I would like to ask, how does this come into being? Because I know a lot of money was spent on this place evidently before it was ever approved to even to get to where it is. How can that be? And if you will, I appreciate you answering that question. Thank you very much.
Through the chair, the applicant began the process before they started the permit process, so that's why they're before you today. And as is common, most times they, they don't know, but they are going through the proper process now, but I would like the applicant to come up and tell us a little bit more about their, basically their operational, their operations in regards to what the, who these people are as far as facilities, who, who it will serve and what kind of traffic they're anticipating as far as any emergency vehicles or, or anything else like that.
Thank you, thank you for the opportunity to address those concerns which are valid. I didn't get your name, so...
Darryl Ward.
Thank you, Mr.主任. One of the things I do want to answer because it's just, this is what I was just born to do and that is take care of the elderly and the way that is proper and the way that we give them quality of life and dignity. And it is precisely why we've chosen a residential care facility in an effort for the, the residents that come to live with us usually typically would have their mental faculties, but more likely would have suffered a stroke or have had hip surgery. And ironically, it's been farmers that end up choosing our home, orange growers, walnut. So it is in an effort to serve this community that don't want to be institutionalized and the other type of skilled nursing facilities in the area in Teleri and all around Teleri County, but they want a more cohesive, homey environment and that is what I have, we have set out to create for our residents that come in. So typically, anyone that comes to, what, what does that look like? The picture looks like anyone, it could be any of your moms or dads or grandpas or sisters or brothers who have done a pretty good job of staying at home with in-home care services or something like that, but where their needs have grown to be more, where they need assistance with everyday living, like taking a bath and, because I am a registered nurse and because I have a variety of skills and we actually end up providing higher quality of care than a skilled nursing facility, so that the, the typical client will look like anyone of you that have had someone that is between the ages of sixty and we had a mama that was, we got her to, get her a hundred-year-old, she wanted to be a hundred, all the way to a hundred and four. And typically what they just want to do is they, they like to read their paper, they like to, they have us cook the meals, they're lucky because we have a chef, I'm not a cook, so they're in good hands. But they like to enjoy the sunsets, so no, there is no mental illness, there is no mental disability and if there was, because sometimes the elderly would go through a hip surgery and through the anesthesia process, whatever memory impairment that might have been pre-existing but was not come to the surface, the anesthesia after the surgery puts them in that plane. So my job is to restore their health back to as much as possible, bring them back to their baseline of normal functioning. So, and we have a record of... So, and we have a record of being able to take care of any difficult dementias in our home in Visalia, we have a memory care unit. And so, conservatives, for example, attorneys, judges, end up placing someone with us because they can't find place in between San Francisco and Allee, but we have a doctor and me being the nurse, we take care of those dementias, so more likely you're not going to have a memory unit in there, it's assisted living. So it's sometimes they want to rehab and they want to go home. So, I don't know if that helps.
As far as the environment, we're completely aware of the environment, and actually, we're very appreciative of the environment. I personally, you will find me working the yard, planting the flowers, building the garden, and I really just, this week alone, I was out in the back admiring the trees. So we, we appreciate the environment, we're aware of everything that you guys have to do to have your trees, and that is specifically why we chose this location, because most of our population are farmers and they want to retire in a place like that, they want to be out in the country. As far as traffic impact, yes, Bartley is a very busy street, it's getting busier.
Prosperity.
It's getting busier, there's not a whole lot that we can do about it, because it's an overall of the community growing. That, that really is what the county or the cities are going to do about the traffic impact overall over the long, long period. But the environment, we appreciate the environment, we're well aware, you will not find us complaining about the dust, pesticides and all that, that's part of what you guys have to do. And like I said, I, I myself will be out working the yard, mowing the lawn, it's just part of what I like. And yes, we live out in the country too, and appreciate the peace and quiet.
We're actually farmers in disguise.
Yeah. That's true. Most of the activities of our community will be based in, inside the courtyard. The property has a huge courtyard, which is beautiful and close yard, the pool. The only thing that we did add, as you can see right there, it has a huge yard, so most of our activities will be held inside the property, you won't see anything outside. If anything, we build a nice porch in the front for people to sit outside and enjoy the morning or the evening, reading their paper, having their coffee and things like that. Other than that, everything's going to be indoors.
In addition, if it's possible, we would like to welcome you and to visit our home in Visalia, twenty-nine-fifty East Douglas. It'll give you an idea of who we are, and who our mamas and papas are, and what they look like.
Thank you.
Through the chair, may I ask a question? Hector Garrett, Chief Environmental Planner, there was a concern about traffic. You know, you have a dozen employees, weekend traffic, visitation, how much traffic do you anticipate on a regular basis?
Okay, dozen employees would not, never be there all at one time, so...
Twenty-four hour.
Yeah, over a twenty-four hour period, there will be...
Six or four or something?
It would be four, four employees during the morning shift, and then it tapers down in the evening to two, and then graveyard shift, there'll be another two.
And what about visitors?
Visitors, especially Mother's Day weekend, things like that, you do have more, more visitors, but again, the property has enough parking space inside that it would not impact the streets, it would not be any curbside parking.
Parking wasn't the issue that the gentleman rose, he was talking about traffic.
Yeah.
We're looking at, you know, cars coming and going, not necessarily, we know, we understand you have adequate parking space, but it's the number of cars coming and going, that was his concern, I just wanted to know, get a feel for it, because, you know, when here are dozens of employees, you, I think you provided that clarification to the commission and to the gentleman that it's going to be in shifts, it's going to be, you know, come in, then someone's going to come relieve them, you don't have a lot of visitation except maybe on special events or weekends, how about weekends, are those...
Correct. Weekends, we tend to have a little bit more visitors, but we, for the most part, when they come to us, families a hundred and ten percent trust us, and we don't have people coming every day, we very rarely do have a son or a daughter visiting almost on a daily basis, even that, our community in Visalia is a forty-eight-bed facility, and I think we have two, two residents that have almost a five to six-day-a-week visitor.
Would it be fair to guesstimate that ten or twenty visitors per day at best, or even less than that? It's a question.
Oh, no.
I don't know.
Yeah, it would definitely be way under ten.
Video file.
Yeah, so we'll have max five visitors a day.
So the majority of the traffic is going to be through employees rotating, coming in and out?
Correct.
Chair, I'd just like to make one, one statement. I think this is probably an asset to the community, and we need, we need facilities like this. Mr. Westbrook asked the commission directly, what would, we would think about this in our own backyard, and I for one, assuming that you're a good neighbor and you take care of the place and make it look nice, would love to have a skilled registered nurse living right next door to me. I'd have her on my speed dial, and I'd call there first before I called nine-one-one.
That will come.
So anyway, that's the answer to Mr. Westbrook's question.
I'd like to echo what Ed said too, because, I don't know if you've noticed, but this country right now is in a crisis to provide this kind of care for more people than, it's unprecedented, the amount in our, in, well, in the greatest generation there ever was, according to Tom Brokaw, what are we going to do with these people? In Three Rivers, we would bend over backwards to accommodate a twelve-resident facility like this in our town, we can't attract or get anyone to come there. And what happens is, is our people end up staying, our elderly, I'm going through it right now, and I know Ed is too, to, they age in place as long as possible. They fall, they have all kinds of medical emergencies, they put extra, additional calls onto our emergency personnel, because we don't have an assisted place. So, we're going to see this kind of thing more and more, and the great thing about a place of this size is that it's affordable compared to our other alternative, which would be like Quail Park. And some of our residents can afford Quail Park, but not the majority. So I applaud their efforts, and I realize that, you know, this kind of thing needs to be regulated, but you're going to see these kind of things popping up all over the county, because you folks are going to be needing the very same thing. Now, you may have family members that can move in and live with you and take care of you, and you can age in place, but not all of us have that. And so, again, I, I think that these things need to be regulated and monitored, but we, they're a definite asset to the community.
Thank you. There was also the issue raised on, does this qualify as residential? I don't know if you can address that.
Yes, through the chair, Aaron Box, Chief Planner. Dana, if you want to put the entitlement.
You can take a seat, thank you.
Thank you.
Sanitariums and hospitals.
I noticed that the first time you brought it up, so maybe there's another one.
Okay, let me read it. Entitlement, section two-B, hospital-sanitarian nursing home is in allowed use in the RA zone upon approval of a special use permit.
Thank you.
So it's in the zoning code, section three-fifty-two.
Was there anyone else wishing to speak? Let's come forward. We will ask you not to repeat things that have been already said, so hopefully you provide additional new information.
My name is Becky Peshoot, I'm at fourteen-twenty-four Lewis Lane, just catty-cornered adjacent to the property. My husband and I bought our property in two thousand and two with the same reasoning behind, it's, it's a little bit of heaven, you know, two and a third acres, you're, you have neighbors, but you're also close to shopping, but you have that country atmosphere. It is very quiet out there majority of the time, we do get some traffic noise a little bit, but overall, it is a little bit of heaven. As much as I appreciate what this, this facility is trying to do, I have a mother eighty-nine years old, it does happen to be in Quail Park, so I have an understanding of a need for this type of thing, and I admire that, and I'm not disputing that by any means. But as far as the cost, you may assume that it's going to be cheaper, but that's not necessarily the case. So I know there's another facility in Visalia that has a very small situation, and they actually were running their pricing more than Quail Park. So it depends on the care, depends on the needs, it depends on the assisted portion of it, and there's more to do than just the size of the facility. So, that argument in itself isn't really, you know, valid for moving into a neighborhood and saying we're going to give them that kind of atmosphere, it changes our atmosphere and our environment. I know that at Quail Park and some of these places, they have emergency vehicles coming and going all the time, because depending on the age group, we never know what's going to happen to their health. And that's also going to change, we rarely hear emergency vehicles, I mean, once in a great while, you'll have one go up Mooney or Prosperity, but it's, it's in a distance, it's not normally right through our neighborhood of sorts. As far as their driveway that's coming off of Prosperity, I appreciate the thought behind all of that, and it's already been there, from the previous owner that had his business and his trucks and stuff parked in behind where I assume they're going to do their parking. But that is a very dangerous corner, and that, that driveway right next to Lewis Lane, I have seen, I can't tell you how many near misses of people pulling in and, and going to be pulling into their driveway for that particular residence, but they turn their blinker on at Oakmore, you know, leaves people to believe, sitting there at Lewis Lane, that they're going to turn on Lewis Lane. And I have seen, I can't tell you how many near misses because of that, because you can't control those types of things. They are saying, I'm going to turn, you need to do that on a busy road like that, understandably, but it, it leaves people sitting at Lewis Lane thinking, oh, gosh, they're going to turn right there, and what are they going to try to do? Pull out. Boom. So it's very dangerous, you start adding more and more traffic, more and more visitors, visitors, they aren't going to be able particularly to control, they may choose to use that parking lot, but they may also choose to use the street. If they do big events that are going on on weekends, there's going to be parking along Lewis Lane in front of our properties. And, you know, it just changes our environment. And I, I love older people, I love my mother, and I love the facility she's in, and I love the care for that, but it's appropriately placed in a place that's not affecting a neighborhood such as ours, that's that little bit of heaven, that is going to change it, there's just no way around it. As far as the care and maintenance, they've already had some, you know, I know they're just coming in to change it, but the yard has already started to change, and it gets too long, and, and so on and so forth. And, so, you know, they didn't get their special permit, I'm sorry, I feel like that was an excuse, they said they already had a facility like this, so they should have already known that that needed to be gotten in advance. So they go in and start this construction, I feel bad, they've already put a bunch of money out there. But regardless, to say that a lot of people don't know, they probably knew. So now they've started this project, and it leaves pressure to think, well, gosh, you know, they put all this money in, so let's just go ahead and let them do it. I feel bad for that, but that's unfortunately an excuse that should have been taken care of, what makes us believe they're going to follow all the other rules? So, that's my concern. Again, I appreciate what they do, but there is a lot of property in Tulare that could have been more well-served, that wouldn't affect an area that has been so special to all of us that have lived there for years, and what's going to happen to our property values? You know, you put a commercial thing across the street, I don't know what that's going to do, but it, it may not be positive. Thank you for hearing me out.
Question to staff, and I think I read it somewhere...
He's in the question staff, thank you.
Sorry.
Go ahead.
This was set up, I think there was a comment in here someplace about, it was going to be less, the development aspect of this would be less rigorous, because there was already a storage yard...
There's already a use permit for a contractor's storage yard.
Yeah, was there a contractor's storage yard?
Yeah, contractor's storage.
How long was it there?
For them.
I don't have a date on it.
How big was it? Does anybody know?
Well, you can see the operator, it's the current operational size, that was all asphalted during that time, and that's probably the source of the confusion on the applicant's part, because they bought this property believing it already had a use permit, they didn't understand necessarily that it wasn't necessarily for this purpose. And so that was some of our discussions during the Project Review Committee, was that the PSP was oh-eight, so, you know, it's been there for ten years.
Okay.
So that was the source of their confusion. And now they, as explained to them, they have to go through, through this process, including being before you, before they'll be issued building permits, so...
But the point, my point is, there was some sort of an act, well, this, in this case, it was a equipment coming and going, right?
Yeah, I don't know what the actual details are.
So there was some activity out there that was non...
Non-residential in the...
Farm slash residential.
The last ten years, correct.
Okay.
My name is Christine Hurd, I live at fourteen-twenty-five Lewis Lane, right next door to the north of the site. I could probably answer some of those questions as regards to the previous construction site, because we were very close with those owners. It was just a construction yard, storage facility, they did have employees that showed up in the morning, they did one-hundred percent use the Prosperity Avenue entrance, so that kept the noise to a minimum. However, their hours of operation were typically anywhere from six in the morning until two in the afternoon, so as far as evening noise and that sort of thing, and because it was a construction storage facility, it had nothing to do with twenty-four-hour care and emergency vehicles and that sort of thing. So some of my concerns, because I am probably one of the property owners that's most affected by this, being right next door, is, one, my property values, because if, I'm really concerned with the signage, if they're going to have this huge billboard that is visible from Prosperity, I have, I, I believe, I don't know if it's true, that it would be really difficult for me to sell my property when somebody else is coming in, seeing that there's an eighteen-bed assisted facility next door. So that was a main issue, I would, I would like for the signage to be addressed before that this gets approved. Second was, as they talked about the increased traffic, like I said, the previous owner, their employees just showed up for work, then they left, and then came back, got their vehicles, and, and left again. It wasn't a barrage of all-day-long different vehicles coming in and that sort of thing. Really concerned about the emergency vehicles and the after-hours noise from the facility. I myself have really difficulties with sleeping already, and I'm just really concerned that this is going to make that even worse. Would like to know the exact staff shifts of when people are coming and going. All of, all of our neighbors in the area have animals and dogs, pet animals, and so with those shift changes is going to come dogs in the neighborhood barking, because that's what they're trained to do out in the country, is to alert people when other people show up. They made a comment that they were going to try to encourage people to use the Prosperity driveway to enter, however, since they've taken over the property, they've had it blocked off and have discouraged that use for their contractors and anybody coming and going. So I'm kind of concerned about that. They mentioned that they will be having activities in the courtyard. I would be interested to know if there is going to be hours, hour restrictions on use of that as well, because of the noise. And I'm just, yeah, I'm just, I'm just concerned about just the property, and like all of my neighbors have mentioned, we moved out there for it because it was quiet, we like to be out there in the country where there's not very many people, we do hear some roid, road noise from Prosperity, but as a whole, we hardly ever hear emergency vehicles and that sort of thing. We're a very tight-knit community and take care of each other. And, just concerned that it's, you know, it is rural residential and that it is able to be converted to this business with a special use permit, but there's other businesses in the neighborhood that run, other houses in the neighborhood that run businesses, but those people live there, and this to me is, completely takes it out of the residential realm and puts it directly into a commercial realm, which into a commercial realm, which for me, it's, I just think that it's a poorly thought-out decision in a site on the property owners.
Thank you. I think some of those issues have already been addressed. Is there anybody else that would like to speak?
Okay.
Make your name and address again, please.
Esperanza Hanson Gonzalez, and my address is 250 East Douglas. In regards to, in response to Quayle Park, one of the key differences of why our care is needed is that Quayle Park, people choose it, and I probably would choose it for my mom, if she was able to take care of her niece mostly, and I want to hands-off mostly. The clients that we do have are calling mamas and papas, is, will likely need help. Quayle Park calls the ambulances if they just lit up. The reason is because they do not want to pay for a skilled nurse like an LVN minimum, much less an RN like me. With our residents, I'm the one responding. I'm the one calling the family, and I call the doctor 24/7. If that person has mobility and there is no other issues, we're not calling 911. If there is an issue of respiratory issues, cardiac, that we haven't foreseen, or I, you know, I didn't see before, the urinary tract infection, then it came until 2:00, you know, those are rare occasions. It's not that often. So, and the fact that I have one doctor, we have the continuity of care that I call 24/7. This is how we are markedly different than most communities, even Quayle Park. We get a lot of residents from Quayle Park because when they start needing to, they forget how to get to the dining room, they get charged $10 more per plate. We don't. We do an assessment at the beginning, and we stay with that. I don't do this nonsense of, oh, yeah, you know, bring him back, bring him here, we'll take care of him, and then 15 days into it, I'm charging you more. We don't do that. For 19 years, anyone that I've taken care of can tell you that. So the way that we approach care is inclusive, is cohesive, and it is, it is the way that you would want your own mothers and fathers being taken care of, not in an institution. The way that a lot of people, many residents that go to Quayle Park, Prestige, end up coming to us in a really bad shape. We end up restoring them, some end up going back home. So the big difference is that the skill of caring for the residents, it being a registered nurse and having a doctor on call 24/7, it gives in continuity of care that you are not going to find anywhere else other than our home. So no, there's not going to be this nonsense of, you know, ambulances like we're trying to picture. I really have to differ with that because, you know, you can check our history and how we address the care. We address it with the utmost dignity, with quality of life for anyone, and we're trying to give a residential care setting and experience because we believe that the great generation deserves that. And that is, that is my passion, and that is why I'm even here. Otherwise, I'd be working for Quayle Park and, you know, they have to.
I think there's a question for you.
Through the chair, Hector Garrett, chief of environmental planner. Testimony was given that there's going to be noise because of possibly related to outdoor activities. Can you tell us what type of outdoor activities and how frequent those may occur?
I can address that. We just had our.
Go ahead and state your name again.
Arnold Gonzalez, 1333 Lewis Lane. We just had, last week, our Mother's Day event, for example, we would have the same thing there.
We do a banquet.
It was during lunch hours, we had classical music playing. That was our event. That was the extent of our outdoor noise. It was held in the gardens. And let me tell you, my dad, my dad's almost 90. Comes 6:00, he's done. He doesn't want to hear anything, just like our residents. When, after dinner, they just want to nap, watch TV, and relax. We will never hold an event late hours, period. Okay?
Thank you.
I just want to propose something to staff, maybe. Is there a way that we could inspect on this permit to have them, you know, do some kind of monitoring situation?
Yes, we could increase our monitoring to quarterly for the first year to see. And it sounds like from the neighbors, if there's anything wrong, you would hear about it immediately. But we can do quarterly inspections on this property.
I think for this, I think for this one, that might be appropriate. It might be, I mean, it all sounds good, and we certainly understand the neighborly concerns, but I think that maybe that would, you know, alleviate some of the potential problems down the road.
And the other would be the entrance off of Prosperity versus Lewis. I think they testified that they would be coming in through Prosperity, so is that something?
That's what the side plan shows.
Well, and also on emergency vehicles, I want to say, they, unless they're in traffic, they don't run with the sirens. They may have a light, but they don't need that in quiet areas, and they don't, they don't run full noise, if you will, in our neighborhood either, where I am.
Okay, our community here in Visalia, when we call 911, we request to show up with sirens off.
They ask us.
And they've never, we've never had any issues with fire department or ambulance companies not to apply that. Because we, our big community is actually in the middle of a residential neighborhood. We have apartment complexes and houses around us, so we're mindful of the noise, especially if they, we do call at night, but fire department, at our request, shows up without sirens.
Also.
As far as, also, the entrance on Prosperity, we do have it blocked off right now with cones, because since nobody's living at the house, we don't, people tend to come in through our main driveway on Lewis Lane and make a U-turn there. For that specific reason, because we're not there, we put cones there to just encourage that. Staff and families will be encouraged to use the Prosperity driveway.
And just to reassert is that we have a history in Visalia since 2004. Any one of you is welcome to check it out as far as noise, and since I've been there, there's been this many complaints, zero. And we have neighbors all around us.
Yeah, we're very mindful of the environment, of where we're at, what we're trying to provide. Again, we're trying to provide a nice home for our residents, and just like our neighbors want a nice, quiet home, we have the same on site.
Thank you.
Through the chair, one more final question. Hector Garrett, chief of environmental planner. There was an issue raised with the aesthetics regarding signage. Someone mentioned the big billboard. I know those zones have certain limitations, so do you know what kind of signage you're going to put out there, if any?
The signage, I don't want a big billboard, period. We want a nice, small sign that can sit on the lawn and stuff and illuminate it, whether it's solar lighting or just landscape lighting. That's all. I mean, the one we have over here in Visalia, it's a four-by-eight sign, but that mounts on a block wall at the main entrance. On this community, I think we'd want something smaller. I don't want something big. I don't like the way that looks either. If people are looking for us, they'll know where we're at.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, we'll close the public hearing. And forward if commissioners would like to make a motion for or against.
I have a quick question. Dana, what was that, what's that parcel due north of the site? Is that another residence?
Due north, yes.
It's kind of like brown, so it's all dirt or whatever that is. Is that another, is that a ranch?
Here?
Right there, that's it.
Could be south or north.
No, no, north, due north.
It's a residential home, that's where I live.
That's what she was talking about.
So those are just outbuildings around your home?
A shop.
Shop, okay.
Well, I think by law, they are entitled to this use with special conditions, of which the county has provided those conditions. And I'll make a motion with the modification that we add quarterly monitoring for the first year, and approve a categorical exemption consistent with California Environmental Quality Act and the State SEQA Guidelines pursuant to Title 14 California Code Regulation, Sections 15301 Class 1 pertaining to existing facilities and conditionally approved special use permit PSP 18-022.
I'll second.
Tom?
Yes.
At least.
Yes.
Elliot?
Yes.
DS?
Yes.
Willatch?
Yes.
Aguilera?
Yes.
Motion passed. We do thank all of you for attending, and please feel free to be able to voice any complaints, and you do have the opportunity to go forward to the board of supervisors. So, appeal, yes.
Good job, boss.
Okay, we'll go to special permit number PSP 18-025.
All right, Chairman Aguilar, this is a special use permit PSP 18-022, and.
Through the chair, Dana, if you want to put it into slideshow.
Sorry.
She's tired.
Been standing all morning. All right. This is a request to allow a recreational vehicle park on a 70,000-square-foot portion of a 66-acre parcel in the PDFM 217 Zone in Badger. The hearing notification map, this project was noticed according to the law, and staff has not received any comments regarding the project. Entitlement is found in Section 18.7, the F-Foothill Combining Zone, which authorizes the filing of special use permit applications for recreational uses. And entitlement is also found, or the definition of recreational uses is found in Appendix 2 of Policies and Procedures, which the commission, the planning commission, did determine that a recreational vehicle park was a recreation use. The environmental finding is a categorical exemption consistent with SEQA, according to Section 15301 Class 1 pertaining to existing facilities. And the use of this section is applicable and appropriate because the project will utilize existing facilities from a previous development that was almost entirely razed at this site. The subject site is located in the Badger Elderwood Development Corridor, and the land use designation is Foothill Mixed Use. This proposal is consistent with these applicable general plan policies. This is the vicinity map. The project is located on the east side of State Route 245 and south of the Fresno-Tulare County line and north of Badger. This is the aerial photograph. Tentative subdivision map number TSM 793 was approved by the Board of Supervisors on July 31, 2007, which allowed a 371-acre site to be divided into 74 lots. This special use permit is for Lot 41 of that tract map. And the final map for TM 793 has not yet been recorded, and the applicant is working towards getting that recorded before the expiration date, which is now July 31, 2018. There's been a number of extensions of time, state extensions of time. This is the zoning map. Planned development Foothill Mobile Home, 217,000-square-foot Minimum Zone, and the site contains four residential structures from previous development, and they are currently being used for vacation rentals. There are 13 concrete slabs that were previously used as a mobile home pads, and the infrastructure from the previous development, which includes 1 50,000-gallon water tank, domestic water line, six-inch domestic water line, 5,000-gallon septic tank, 600 feet of leach lines, and four water wells, and electricity. All of this infrastructure is at these pads. And so the RVs would be able to hook up to all of this infrastructure. The surrounding properties here, they're all zoned similarly, and they contain cabins and forested areas. This is the overall map, and the area to be developed with the RV park would be right An enlarged map of that section. As mentioned, there's 13 existing concrete pads with all of the utilities and infrastructure already located on site. Condition of approval will require that all RVs be allowed to reside on the site for no longer than six months at any one time, and they shall vacate the site for at least 45 days before being allowed to return to Badger Creek Development. There is a caretaker who resides on the subject site 24 hours a day. RV parks and campgrounds are under the authority of the California Department of Housing and Community Development. The Division of Codes and Standards oversees the Special Occupancy Parks Act, and the Housing and Community Development oversees all aspects of RV park operations, including swimming pools, building permits, layout, and design. In order to legally operate in California, you need to have been issued a permit to operate by the department, the State Department of HCD, or the local jurisdiction, only if they have been granted authority in California. A requirement for the permit is to have an annual emergency preparedness plan for the guests. The applicant has submitted a letter to HCD in effort to obtain this permit, being proactive, and a copy of that was in your original packet. And I guess that is the end of staff's presentation, and the recommendation is to your planning commission to approve the categorical exemption consistent with SEQA and conditionally approved special use permit number PSP 18-025.
So what was there before did not have a special use permit, is that?
I'm not sure.
Because it sounds like.
It was from the, from the 70s, the Synanon.
Oh, pretty straightforward, good use. Yeah, that place up there has been neglected for a long time, and if, boy, if you want some peace and quiet, that's where to go.
Let's go ahead and open the public hearing.
Good morning, commissioners, and thank you. My name is Alan Williams. I'm with AW Engineering, the consultant for Badger Creek. My address is 724 North Ben Maddox Way, Suite A, Visalia, California, 93292. Thank you for your review and consideration of this project. We want to thank both Aaron and Dana for. We want to thank both Aaron and Dana for their help on getting us to this point, and assistance in working with us. It was much appreciated. I can go in a lot of detail about the project, but in light of the time, I've got our operation manager for the project and myself is available to answer any questions.
I like it, so I think it's a good use.
You know, take care of the place, fix, keep it clean and fix it up, because it's needing it. I think it's a good idea.
Thank you. Anyone else? Then we'll close the public hearing for this project.
One to add to that, it's going to clear up some dead trees at no expense to the county.
I'll make a motion to approve a categorical exemption consistent with California Environmental Quality Act and the state's SEQA guidelines pursuant to Title 14 California Code Regulations, Section 15301 Class 1 pertaining to existing facilities and conditionally approved special use permit, PSP 18-025.
I'll second.
Song?
Yes.
Billys?
Yes.
Elliot?
Yes.
BS?
Yes.
Willatch?
Yes.
Aguilar?
Yes.
All right. On to Director's Report.
I just, to give a little bit of background on assisted living permitting, just as a general background, the state of California has recognized that there's a tremendous need for that and for other things such as hospice and group homes and things like that. So, they actually allow by right, the trumps are zoning up to six beds. So, if the facility is six beds or less, they can do it without coming to us at all. Provided it's in a zone that allows residential use. So, RA would allow a house, therefore, they're allowed by right via the state for six beds. However, our zoning ordinance allows and accommodates for greater size with the use permit, and therefore, that's how we process. Just to give a little background on that, we're working on our general plan updates for communities of Goshen and Three Rivers. Goshen will be going to the board on the 5th for adoption, and Three Rivers is getting very close to finalizing the EIR. So therefore, what I'm going to be asking through the Chair is to hold a special meeting for the planning commission on May 30. The reason that we're asking for that is because of board dark dates in June and July. Otherwise, it wouldn't be going, there would be a gap of about six to seven weeks between going to the planning commission, and we wouldn't be getting into the board, unfortunately, until the end of July. We want to get there earlier than later. So therefore, if we were able to hold a special meeting on the 30th, we'd be able to get to the Board of Supervisors in June, and the last meeting in June, they'd be able to consider for adoption.
So you're talking about the Three Rivers?
Three Rivers for the EIR, Doc. Yeah. And with that, if, so, you know, if that's acceptable to your planning commission, that's the way staff would like to proceed.
23rd would be on schedule, and then an additional meeting.
Then there'd be an additional meeting, yeah.
An extra payday then.
Some pay.
They're rich.
So it is a Wednesday at the regular time then?
Regular time, and it'll all be published and noticed accordingly. We'll even make mention on the next agenda.
Oh, noticed in the Times Delta?
Yeah, there you go.
What was the date again?
30th.
30th. It's two days after Memorial Day.
Of May.
Don't make plans.
I think we'll be back.
Plan accordingly.
Good sense is here.
I'm okay, as long as we can notify the folks.
We will, we will plan to have a, an additional meeting up in Three Rivers prior to, probably the week before. We need to get all, everything finalized before we can go up there and present, but we're looking at probably maybe the Thursday before, we'll hold a special meeting up there and publicize that.
But what exactly would be on the agenda then for this May 30th meeting?
30th would be the, the public hearing for the community plan, Three Rivers community plan.
For the recommendation.
For the recommendation to the board. Staff has been going through all the comments that, you know, we received. This is just short of what we received for the overall general plan. I mean, there's hundreds and hundreds.
So we'll be, you'll be, like Hector will be reading the response to the comments, that sort of thing, we'll be discussing those.
Well, it will be documented.
Hector says no.
We won't be reading it all into the record. It will be in the record, it will be published, noticed, and therefore, then, as the public comments are, concerns could be brought up, and we'd be able to address them. But all of, all of the comments that have been received, there will be responses to, written into the record in the final EIR.
Do we have a total number of comments right now? Do we know what they were?
Well, we received, how many different letters? Not, not a huge, not a huge amount of letters, but there was hundred, some of the letters had 100 questions, and then each question had sub-questions within that question. So, we were estimating 1,200 responses we have to go to, something like that.
The general plan EIR was 2,000.
And I only respond to SEQA related issues. Eric can do the planning component of it. If it's SEQA related, you're going to get a response. If it's, say for example, somebody wanted to change the line just from what we proposed, then I would see if our SEQA properly analyzed that. And then keeping in mind to everyone, one of the, one of the caveats, if you will, or the preamble I'm going to put in response to comments is that, you know, these are SEQA related comments and response to comments, and it's a program EIR. It remains a program EIR. There's, it doesn't have specificity of this is going to happen here, that's going to happen here. It just doesn't.
So the Thursday night meeting before, you would want to kind of preview what's going to be in the public hearing?
Now, we made a commitment to the, we made a commitment to the community to go back up to meet with them prior to the planning commission public hearing, so that's what we'll be doing. So, those documents will be available and posted and all of that, so they...
It's kind of tight with the Memorial Day weekend.
But we know it.
Well, it's Thursday, I know, it's Thursday, it's Thursday before.
Yes.
The Thursday before, I mean, I could see if it was Friday or Sat, obviously not, but being Thursday, I don't know how many people leave on Thursday.
And to clarify too, we will have this stuff posted by law 10 days prior to the meeting anyway. So they may, you know, so if we meet, planning, I mean, city, Board of Supervisors, 10 days prior to that, they're going to have it out there on the, on the website, so. And they call us, of course, all the time, anytime.
I'll, I'll get them primed.
So Wednesday, the 23rd, we also have a meeting?
A regular meeting.
Is that a very, it's a very big, I won't be here, but the 23rd.
That's the one right before Memorial Day weekend.
I'll be here on the other one.
Okay, so, once we get Goshen and Three Rivers completed, then the next ones we'll be looking at is Cutler, Rossi, Ivanhoe, and Papa Cotton Center. Those are the next community plans on, on our list to go after. Just to touch base on a couple other projects, major projects, the Hash Development, which is a residential development up near Kingsburg, that we're finishing up on the final EIR. We're meeting with the consultants and going through that, looking to PC date in June probably for that. And then the Sierra Gateway Valley Children's Hospital project, still working on the draft EIR, finalizing administrative comments on that. That should be out for, hopefully, the release sometime mid-June, I guess, if all things go well. That means we would probably be in August to the planning commission for that project.
Where is that at?
Baldwin 99. So, on the southeast side of, you know, east of the Shell Cast Station.
Are we going to have an airport land use advisory meeting?
East, east of the?
Yeah, east of the Shell, yeah. Short-term rentals, be taking something to the board in June, and if the direction is given, they were talking about beefing up the permit, the application process for licensing and all that. Depends how they go. If they were to choose to add something to the zoning ordinance, then we'd be back here to the planning commission regarding that probably in July, all dependent on what the board's direction is on that. Just as far as the economy goes, there's a, there's a number of ag businesses that are expanding right now. We've got projects for Ventura Coastal, Seton Farms, Ro Pistachios, Sundale Vineyards, Pittman Farms is continuing to expand. Dairy Experts is a project that came before your commission, probably three or four years ago, or maybe even longer. He's Alfonso, and I can't remember his last name.
Fain.
Yes. And he was a professor working out of COS. Larry lost his laboratory there, wanted to build his own. So, it's just alongside the 99 north of the Pixley-Tipton rest stop on the northbound side.
We approved that, didn't we?
Yeah, we approved it.
Yeah, you approved it, and what I'm saying is it's taken some time for him to get the funding and to get everything. So he's under construction now, he's looking to be opening that in not too long, and that will provide good services for the dairy industry specifically.
And that's on the east side of the freeway?
On the east side, it's, yeah, it's on the northbound side.
It's huge, huge.
He's got, he's, he's got his, his shade structure up for his corrals now, yeah. So that's, that's moving forward as well, so. And then, you know, last year, we took a few projects, presentations before you from Public Works. I think the, the board just received the presentation regarding their, the bridge programs that we have. I think that might be of interest to, to your, your commission, so I think I'll try to schedule and get Public Works to come do the presentation they gave on Tuesday to the Board of Supervisors, to your commission, and let you see that, what they're doing out there, what's been done, what's planned, and what's under construction now, so.
Are we getting any of our tax dollars back from the state reimbursement wise? Whether it was the 10 years Arnold took all our tax money up to the state.
For which?
Was it property tax that they took? What was that, John? Remember? The state, when they were, the state was in a bind, and they didn't reimburse us. They took...
Well, the, on the Williamson Act, they stopped subvention payments, but there's a process in there where through A B, I think it's 1265 from back five, six years ago, a process where the taxpayer pays a little bit incremental more, and we're able to take all of that, and it doesn't get us 100% whole for, for the reduced subvention, or eliminated subvention basically, but it gets us about 85, 90% there.
All that, I guess maybe I'm confused on a deal. I thought we, when the state was in a bind and their budget, they, they took, took money from the county.
I think it was a Williamson Act, though.
Williamson Act, that was in 2008, 2009, yeah. They stopped those subvention payments, and their office on the Williamson Act, they basically have two staff members statewide for that whole program right now. Yeah. So as far as taxes go, that, what is it, SB 1? You know, it's going to be on the ballot probably to, to be repealed, but those, those funds we have already using what we're getting from that, the increased gas tax, but that, I would think, would probably be likely repealed, and so that'll take a cut to some of our proposals. But we've been conservative in estimating what we can do, because we kind of, you know, we have two tracks. We kind of know that that funding might go away, and we can, you know, scale back our proposals based on that. That would conclude my report, if anybody has...
Close to my bedtime, 8 o'clock.
Here. Do you want to report on the conference, or?
Well, we ought to briefly go through that. I'd like Bill and Mel, because they were able to be there, just give their brief reactions to what they saw and did, and then I'll just wrap up.
You guys are going to give us a written report?
I don't know about that, but the whole thing was streamed. This conference was really unique, because we recorded the entire conference, and it'll be on the website. And in terms of the sessions, I have to say that there were some real useful things for, especially for Tulare County, because Shasta County, which is about a fourth the size and population of Tulare County, is doing a lot of progressive things. In some of their community, for instance, in some of their communities where they have the TOT, you know, the Transit Occupancy Tax, and the local communities are, you know, don't get a share of that from their boards, they've implemented another, they've implemented another assessment on top of that, which they do get. And they get that, and that goes directly and stays right back in the community. There wouldn't be a lot of people for that in our county, but it's one way to deal with the situation. And they do a tremendous job with attracting visitors and providing amenities. They have one of the premier trail systems in the entire United States that's just everywhere, and lots of federal lands, which people take advantage of there, and are big attractions. And then our session in the afternoon was how certain jurisdictions within the county are dealing with the marijuana, and they're really on the cutting edge. And while you guys are considering the, you know, the moratorium and that sort of business that's coming down in terms of our dispensaries and distribution, they are providing a good model for how to do it in the state of California, so. And, you know, they're still, have a lot of areas that they're not sure how they're going to work out, but they're going forward with some progressive stuff, and their, you know, their revenue predictions and how they're doing it, they're looking at, you know, cultivation at the beginning will be indoors and commercial areas, and some of the areas are being taken over that, you know, are standing there vacant right now with nothing in them. So, there was a lot of good examples in our session. The housing, oh my God, we went through every A B there is on the housing element, and got a whole education on the housing too, and how all that works. The one thing that they, you know, that was on the agenda and we didn't get to was how the state and the county is working together to help people who are doing the, you know, the short-term rentals, and, you know, registering those, and how they are trying to make it more streamlined, the process, so that people can establish those like we need in Three Rivers. The Saturday, though, now I'll let Bill comment on that, because I know it was really incredible, the tours that we did.
But we had a bong in the boat, of the bus, you know.
Well, not exactly, but...
It was a very interesting tour, because we got a tour of the Shasta Dam, and a little bit of the history on that, and, you know, we have a dam here, and so basically, before that dam was built, Reading was not a very nice place to live, and thanks to the economy that, it began to help Reading grow. And what happened was, they dug something called Turtle Bay, and that's where they got all the rock to build the dam from, and they built a 10-mile conveyor, which part of it is still there, and what they ended up with is sort of interesting, people are always kind of worried about the pits where they mined the rock and gravel, what it's going to look like. Well, this is, of course, they have a Sacramento River goes right through it. It's become a beautiful recreation location, a beautiful hotel that's right on the river. That's where the Sundial Bridge is, and Mel was quick to point out to me that, you know, the Sundial Bridge, it's like a real sundial. He says it's an hour off.
It's a daylight saving.
But anyway, it, and then they had a foundation that gifted a lot of money to build that.
Yeah, they went out and attracted some private money that got the whole thing rolling.
But it was a local family that granted the money. So when we're looking at these scarred, so-called scarred locations of mining, they can be improved to beautiful recreational areas. We also went to a wood, a wood mill, it was actually advertised as a cogeneration plant, but it was probably the nicest mill I've ever been through, because everything was very computerized. They generate all their electricity, plus about 97% of their electricity goes back to the community, and it probably services a couple thousand houses. All the wood comes in, shaved, it's, they make telephone poles, and they make two-by-fours, it's all, everything's done by computer, and of course, they generate a lot of steam to run, run all those things. So, their downtown redevelopment is not all that... So, their downtown redevelopment is not all that interesting, but they're making an effort to redevelop, which is a pretty crummy downtown. They've been able to knock it down and, and it's not like a Sequoia Mall. That's what I, what I thought was, they said they took the roof off. Well, it was, it was kind of an open mall, old and a mix of old buildings, new buildings. And so, they're going to, it's, it's going to take them a while. And if you're looking for a place to go for steaks, Jack's Bar and Grill. It's been there since nineteen thirty-five.
What's the population of Ready?
Ninety-four thousand.
Ninety-four?
Yeah, it's a little bit under Visalia. The, um, the cogeneration plant was really interesting. I didn't really know a whole lot about that, but I did know about Sierra Pacific Industries, which is the company. And they, that was the company that battled with the environmentalists in the, in the seventies and eighties, you know, in terms of the old growth forest. They've worked out a real nice compromise and they still have a very vital lumber industry going in Northern California, five thousand employees. And in talking to the.
Billion acres.
Yeah, and in talking to the employees we met, they love working for that company and they have a really, you know, a really good future.
Very sophisticated operations, so.
Yeah, it was really impressive.
I don't know if we could ever get the lumber industry to come back here, but.
Well, they may not need to now with.
Well, they, they were, well, we got a lot of trees we're cutting down.
Right.
Hector, the Airborne wouldn't let us do a cogen here.
I know. Well, that's, uh, that's another thing, all that's strictly monitored and, you know, they're, they have air quality issues too and they've been able to deal with them. But it was really good to see the partnerships between public and private that developed the things that the county needed.
Extremely clean as far as the, when they burn all this wood, they collect all the ash and they apparently inject ammonia. And ammonia mixes with the ash, it's a, I mean, you, you don't smell anything.
Yeah, you can't even smell the lumber.
Then all the ash is used in agricultural farming, so, no, it's impressive. That's, that's the kind of wood, uh, processing plant we need. They also take, by the way, he also said they also take grindings, you know, when they take out an orchard, so.
Yeah, there was a lot of use in that too. It was also, I think one thing where our county really gets the kudos is that our board is willing to support our commissioners to be there. And the other counties that came, you know, they might send one. And the rest of the conference appropriations go to staff, you know. And so, our commissioners really, that's one of the reasons why we're leading that organization, you know, and keeping it going. Because you can't put a price on all that we experienced and learned in those two days. And so, I, I'm really thankful that our county supports that. And we're certainly, in the next couple of years, we're going to encourage the other counties to do that. Now, this was one of the first times we've been back in Northern California in a long time with our conference. Probably before two thousand was the last time. And next year, we're already negotiating right now, we're going to Humboldt County. So, I think this is going to be another one where we're going to attract new people to the organization and deal with. Next year, we're going to deal with the redevelopment of the small towns and, you know, the preservation of the historic buildings within those towns. So, I'm looking forward to it and I think it's going to be another great conference. Mel, anything to add or, I know you had a good time, so.
We had a good time, yeah, and usually I have to put on, add to make all the, you know, over give the overview, so I don't have to say anything, but. But we did, you know, it's surprising that, you know, John mentioned Humboldt. And the commissioner's been on the board for at least four years. And he said this is his first time being even heard of the, the conference and, and he was glad he attended because he's, he's going to bring back some positive comment. And I think we picked up, well, one of Madera.
Yeah, we, well, we've got several new board members, we've got another one from Riverside County too. And, you know, the thing is, is that the planning departments in those counties kind of keep it a secret from the commissioners. You know, because they're afraid that the board somehow is going to use up their appropriation so they can go to conferences. It's, this is what we're finding out and it's, so we had a lot of commissioners and city council people, but they were mostly from Shasta and Tahama County, you know, they were nearby. And we need to really change that because the, the job of being a planning commissioner is becoming ever more complex than it ever has been. And what we're finding out is these other, um, other counties change planning commissioners like suits, you know, and they don't really get to learn on the job. We're fortunate to have what we have here, we have a lot of knowledge in our planning commission, you won't see that in the other counties, so.
Our legal counsel, we're boring her.
But anyway, it's, our county's to be commended, I think, to support that and we've also hosted. And we're going to begin the commissioner training again too, so I'd like to invite our county to participate in that and maybe do the sessions at a future conference in terms of training planning commissioners. Because we certainly do a good job of that, so. And we're going to stay involved in the board and it looks like we'll be able to, you know, at least orchestrate some of the programs.
Thank you very much. Anybody else?